Good evening. I am Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters of the Wayzata Plymouth area. I'd like to welcome our candidates, our audience, and our viewers on behalf of our host, the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth area. The League of Women Voters is a 104-year-old volunteer nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through advocacy and education. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum tonight are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring such forums as these to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum. We ask that campaign buttons or T-shirts not be worn, nor signs, or literature distributed in this room. Please silence your electronic devices at this point. And now I'd like to introduce you to our moderator for this evening's forum, Lillian Hostuder, a resident of Plymouth and a member of the League of Women Voters, Wayzata Plymouth area.
Thank you.
Did not think so? Oh, thank you. There you go. I can hear myself. Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Corcoran City Council. There is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidate directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete unedited recording of its forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Only the full unedited recording may be used by other persons and organizations. The rules for this evening's forums are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experiences, platforms, and objectives. A question-and-answer period will follow the opening statements. The answers will be confined to one minute unless designated by the moderator. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order, and questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given by the candidates -- to the candidates. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you will be interrupted. The candidates will also be given a two-minute closing statement. No reference of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to, quote, "focus on the issues and not on personalities." We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that the candidate be allowed their full time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance of this forum. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card available from our volunteers and raise your hand to have it picked up. Audience questions will be taken for the first 30 minutes of the forum. The timekeeper will alert the moderator when 30 minutes has elapsed. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general category may be consolidated. Okay, now, the city of Corcoran has three races on the ballot: mayor, city council, and city council special election. There is no League of Women Voters forum scheduled for the city of Corcoran mayor's race because the candidate, Tom McKee, is running unopposed. Also, there is no League of Women Voters forum scheduled for city council special election because the candidate, Mark Lanternman, is running unimposed. The candidates running for two seats on the Corcoran City Council are Craig Espoolian, Michelle Friedrich, Dean Vernkamp, Woody Johnson, and Tony Witch Graham. Jason Woody. My apologies. Jason Woody. Okay, we will now begin the introductory remarks, starting with Craig Spillan.
Hi there. My name is Craig Espillan, and I'm a Bellwether resident right over here to the east. I've been here about three and a half years with my wife, Michelle. And I'm going to ask you tonight to imagine, as a city, Corcoran is at a pivotal moment where the choices we make today will reverberate into the future. Imagine the impact the 610 extension will have on traffic, the challenges caused by unmanaged growth, and the opportunity for haphazard development to continue. Imagine instead a future for Corcoran where we harness the opportunities this new traffic flow creates. We harness our current growth and our rural heritage. I envision this as a potential for building a city we all can be proud of. Imagine Corcoran as a destination, a place that offers an amazing experience, whether for an evening, a day, a week, or a lifetime. Please help me make this a reality. Together we can realize the possibility of a city where thoughtful planning leads to sustainable growth while maintaining our rural roots. Let's build a future we all can be proud of, and I'd encourage you to check out my videos on my YouTube channel.
Thank you. Next candidate, Michelle Friedrich.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Minnesota Women for sponsoring or hosting this event tonight. My name's Michelle Friedrich, and I've been a resident of Corcoran for 24 years, been in different capacities of community service. I worked at the elementary school for nine years, worked at the city for nine years. I'm involved on the Parks and Trails Commission, which I'm very passionate about, and I would love to continue work on the council and helping make decisions that the community is also passionate about and has a direction and strong feelings about. So I've reached out to a couple neighborhoods and gotten some feedback, so I'm excited to share that at some point. But I'm excited at the opportunity, and I thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Dean Vernkamp?
Thank you, Lillian. I too want to thank the League of Minnesota -- excuse me, League of Women Voters for holding this. It's very important. I've been a resident here in Corcoran for 17 years. Prior to that, the rural side of Maple Grove for 20 years. I have a wife, two kids that just recently got married. Very proud of what they do. Being a council member right now, we have a lot of things that we need to decide and change if we possibly can. We've got to do everything to responsibly grow what's inside the Musa boundaries set forth by the Met Council. And for myself, living in a rural part of town, I'd like to do everything I can to preserve the rural heritage that we have in our town. It means a lot. We've got a lot of great families in this town, from Bellwether to Ravinia to the rural portion of town. So a lot of things tell us what we can and can't do, but I try to do my best to challenge that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Jason Woody?
Jason Woody. I've been a Corcoran resident for 40 years. This is my third or fourth time running, so again, I just want to thank everybody here, League of Women Voters, the Hope Ministries, for allowing us to use this building. I see a lot of familiar faces and a lot of new faces, and it's great to see the community involvement. I've been a resident here for 40 years, like I previously stated. We are at a pivotal point in time where growth and development is happening exponentially, and it's -- the development is here at our door, and it's not going anywhere. I think a more common sense and more citizen-based approach and getting more community involvement as to how they feel we should shape and grow Corcoran is crucial. I would like to be a part of that, something bigger than myself, and hopefully we can together create a community for decades to come that everybody enjoys being. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Tony Witch Graham?
Again, thank you for having us, League of Women Voters. My name's Tony Witch Graham. Been a resident of Corcoran for eight years, been in the area for 20. Families got ties to the farming. Like Dean said, we've got to preserve our country farmland and keep Corcoran rural. We can't keep it all rural, but we need to monitor our growth and make sure that the growth doesn't overcome our infrastructure that we have, causing traffic issues and public safety issues.
Okay, thank you. And now we will start the questions in a rotating order. For the first question, the order will be Tony Witch Graham, then Dean Vernkamp, then Craig Espoolian, then Michelle Friedrich, and then ending with Jason Woody. The question is, what is your top priority for Corcoran as a city council candidate? How would you address it if elected? And go ahead, candidate Witch Graham.
Again, I touched on it in my introduction. The top priority, I feel, for Corcoran right now is fulfilling the infrastructure that we have in Corcoran, improving the roads, improving the fire service for the community. I know a lot of the community is without fire protection or immediate fire protection or EMS. Being on the Hanover Fire Department, I know how hard it is to get into the center of Corcoran, and that is my main goal, is to further our reach, help build the fire department within Corcoran, give the knowledge I have, and better the community.
Thank you. And now candidate Vernkamp?
Thanks. Biggest priority probably in my mind is our drive-through traffic. With all of the county roads and everything that's happening in town, and then again, 610 dumping in, we aren't getting a lot of cooperation from the state or the county as to help us with those traffic issues. That, along with the development, like I said initially, of the Musa line, the metro urban service area, that is a boundary set forth by the Met Council that we need to populate and do, and I want to do that respectfully, honestly, and responsibly. I don't want to build anything that's unnecessary, but I also want to take into account our current landowners and such that own it, have the right to sell it. We just need to make sure we're doing it in a good manner. Thank you.
And next, candidate Espoolian.
Well, I think we've got a lot of opportunity. Number one is, we have to have a vision for what we have to work on first, and I see this kind of in this order, is the city center. We've got some area near the city hall that we want to develop that we need to have a much better structural image for all the citizens to see, touch, feel, and provide feedback on. Long range, we need to find home for commercial. Without commercial, we're going to be just another bedroom community, and that means infrastructure grows very slowly. The 30 corridor, when the 610 is done, we have to understand how to get from the 30 corridor to that commercial space. The Musa, we might as well maximize what we're already in, and then finally, we're stuck in this chicken-or-egg thing with the roads. As the county tells us, when you develop, we'll put more roads in. So I think we've got to get the county and hold their feet to the fire to say, let's get it done now so we don't have to put it on the citizens. Thank you.
And next, candidate Friedrich.
Thank you. Top priority, actually, I kind of have two 50/50. They kind of coincide. A tax rate, I guess, for our citizens would be my top priority, and just making sure we're maintaining that. Council has done a fantastic job over the last seven to 10 years maybe of not increasing our tax rate very minimally each year, so that would be a thing that I'd want to continue. And then our parks and trails, which I mentioned I'm very passionate about, I would also make a priority. We have a city park that we're currently planning, our new city park, and one goal of mine is to make sure that we have trails available as soon as we can have them, because every resident can actually utilize the trails. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, candidate Woody?
First off, I would have to say that, like some of the candidates touched on, is the development and how we're going to do it. We cannot just keep getting the cart ahead of the horse. We have to do it in organized and methodical manner, and we do need more commercial and/or industrial companies and properties here to help us maintain positive growth. And infrastructure to allow access, safe access to that would be a big priority. Like they've touched on before, all that traffic coming in from 610 and not getting any help from, you know, the county and the state. Unfortunately, the state or the county won't come in and update our roads until we create the problem and the need for infrastructure updates. So it's a pivotal point, and we need to have some common sense and some common ground to obtain efficient and effective infrastructure for here and years to come.
Thank you. And for the next round of questions, the order will be Jason Woody, then Tony Witch Graham, then Michelle Friedrich, Craig Espoolian, and Dean Vernkamp. The question is, what are your ideas for managing city revenues and expenses to support the city's commitment to fiscal responsibility? And go ahead, candidate Woody.
Could you repeat the first part of that?
Yes. What are your ideas for managing city revenues and expenses to support the city's commitment to fiscal responsibility?
Well, I would start off by making sure that we have someone that's competent and has a knowledgeable and educated background in that area of finance, and then take into account the whole general populace as to what they want. We can't just keep spending money on this, spending on money of that. We should prioritize where expenditures will be spent. A lot of people want to start paving roads and, you know, updating, you know, gravel roads to tar while trying to find financing to pay for that without taking away or putting a financial strain on the city's budget to complete other projects that are necessary for the advancement of the city and the safety of the public.
Thank you. And candidate Witch Graham?
To manage our financial responsibility within Corcoran, we need to think, like Jason said, we tar every road that's gravel for the betterment of the community. However, it comes with a cost, and with that cost, you lose out on your fire service. That could be banking that money to put in a fire station, EMS station. We spend money on buying properties that right now probably don't need to be bought. We can save that money. It's an allocation of the money and making sure it's spent wisely, making sure that it doesn't go into a road that just because someone doesn't like the gravel road, it's going to get tarred. To actually have a true purpose for that road being tarred. It's unmanageable from the public work standpoint. It's just making sure that it feasibly, that it's a legit cause for consideration for investment.
Thank you. And candidate Friedrich?
So I would start by just maybe taking a look at where a lot of the revenue comes from. A lot of the revenue in Corcoran comes from residential homes. I would try to maybe find some opportunities for more commercial and industrial to come in, and that has been something that the city council has been working on already, so I would continue with that plan. There was a situation, or a plan, not a plan, a developer came in and actually had a pretty good-sized, light industrial business that wanted to come in, and I feel like we need to be more supportive of businesses that want to come into Corcoran. Unfortunately, that business backed out for a multitude of reasons, but it was a sad loss for our community because it would have been a good business for our city, which would have produced some light industrial tax base for us, which is a greater tax base than residential is. So I'd start with that, and then I would also try to work closely with staff and ask questions about expenses.
Thank you. And candidate Espoolian?
So let's start with the reality here, is that governments have no money. They get all their money from us, so it's our money. So they have nothing to spend except what we allow them to spend. Second, I didn't put in a culture of sourcing and specification so we understand what we're getting for our money. Third, I put in accountability and metrics to hold people accountable for staying on budget. And speaking of budgets, I go back to the very basics of any business and start with zero-based budgeting. That means you don't get to increase spend until you have the money in the hopper. We have to have fiscal responsibility, especially until we get all of this tax revenue coming in from larger businesses. The residents cannot support full build-out of Corcoran. So think about it. Government has no money except what we give them.
Thank you. And candidate Vernkamp?
It's a great question. I joined on, or was appointed three years ago to council. In the last three years, have been trying their best. Transparency, see accountability, all of those things are absolutely needed. I think with what recently has happened with our new hire of our city administrator, their expectations, the councils knowing and understanding what's happening is all starting to happen, which is nice. We have a significant number of changeover in our administrative side, accounting everyone, and again, the transparency side of stuff is extremely important to me. Knowing what we have, everything is public, and knowing what we can do with that going forward. I think we've done a good job keeping our tax rate flat, and I want to keep doing that also. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Dean Vernkamp, Craig Espoolian, Jason Woody, Tony Witch Graham, and Michelle Friedrich. The question is, what is your vision for development in Corcoran to support the city's commitment to, quote, "becoming a vibrant, connected community while preserving its natural character and agricultural roots"? What types of uses and structures would you support? And go ahead, candidate Vernkamp?
Love to have the minute to think about it. We've got a lot going on. A lot of folks are coming with the expectation that the council and the mayor are just going to say yes to a lot of things. Lot related to interpretation of our ordinances and those kind of things, but us as a council and the current mayor, we want things to be right. We want things to be nice. The complication related to traffic and the issues that we have with the county and them not listening to us is a big deal also. So I am extremely in support of businesses, industrial, commercial, everything. I am boots-on-the-ground with each and every one of those folks that do want to talk. I listen. I do not advise, because there's five of us that make the decision, but I personally go to each and every one that calls me and talk to them to understand what they want. Thanks.
Thank you. And candidate Espoolian?
It's a very good question, way more complex than a minute or so. So what I'd encourage everybody in the audience to do is go look up a town called Carmel, Indiana. In 1970, Carmel had 7,000 people. We have about 8,000 today. Today Carmel has 100,000 people, and they started by focusing on balance. But I think that, I talked about vision before, so that vision tells us where we want to put things. Then we have to have listening sessions with residents, businesses, landowners, developers, to get feedback on what they think works and what doesn't. But we should be driving the plan, then we should then drive the execution of the plan in a very mindful and thoughtful way. So we need to take the reins as a city and plan out where we want the city to grow to, get that feedback, and then execute. And I think that's the most important thing we can do.
Thank you. And candidate Woody?
Yes, I'd be in support of definite development, like some of the candidates have touched on, bringing in more businesses, bringing in more commercial and industrial, and then placing those and having the industrial or commercial part or sector of town in a logical area that makes sense, maybe more towards the northeast corridor where there's more access, closer access to interstates and freeways, and it will free up or, I guess, not add as much traffic to our streets if we put it somewhere closer to in town where the infrastructure isn't really adequate enough. I don't believe we should turn into Maple Grove, but I don't believe a farmer should be in his or her tractor until they're a skeleton before they can sell their land. I think we've got to find a delicate balance between landowners, farm owners, and residents, and come up with a quality, comprehensive plan that makes sense, and execute our goals and objectives from there.
Thank you. And candidate Witch Graham?
Again, we're all for development, but development at what cost? We need to look at our farmland and develop it in a way that it's suitable for everybody. We need to look at our farmland and develop it in a way that it's suitable for everybody. No one wants to live five feet from their neighbor and be able to pass sugar through the windows. Along with our development, we do need our businesses that come in. We need to have that revenue service that brings in people, gives our people something to do. The businesses that would come in, we need to be an actual stay at home business, not stay at home business, but a business that has people, product in it, where our community has a place to learn, our kids have a place to work, something that keeps our kids involved in the community and stays around. Again, with our structures in the, in the neighborhoods, you know, keeping our lot sizes bigger. Personally, I live on an acre lot. I love it. I have enough room between my neighbors and that's where I would draw the line at.
Thank you. And candidate Friedrich.
Thank you. I guess what I'd start with is that Corcoran is a very unique city right now. We have the opportunity to offer amenities, or not amenities, but offer like city living with some of our new developments where the houses are a bit closer. And we also have a rural side. The rural side would be more towards our west and the east side would be where our more developed cities are. So I think we have a nice mix between those two communities. And I think what could connect us and make us more vibrant are some of the things we already have in Corcoran. Our city park would be one where we could actually have celebrations and different things in our city park. And again, our Parks and Trails Commission is working on that and will be sending ideas to council at some point. Our Night to Unite is another great event. We have a food drive in December. There's so many wonderful things happening in our community. I would also add that I think we need to have a really good balance for growth between our landowners, which is our farmers, and the developers that come in. And I think there needs to be a good balance because I wouldn't want to take away maybe a farmer's.
Thank you. Okay. For the next round, the order will be Michelle Friedrich, Jason Woody, Tony Wickram, Dean Vernkamp, and Craig Espoolian. So the question is, what are your thoughts about how to best organize police and fire services to provide public safety for Corcoran residents? And you can go ahead, candidate Friedrich.
First, I would say that fire services will be something that the city will eventually need. At this point, I believe that we should be able to work with our surrounding fire departments to try to come up with some solutions to get us through this next five to 10 years of where we're growing. I think we need to be responsible and make sure that we have those funds available before we spend that type of money because fire services are very expensive. Something maybe like even having a satellite fire station that we could work with maybe Rogers and maybe pay for part of it, or I don't know, we pay them. I'm not sure how that would work right now. But other options besides getting a fully implemented fire department, I think we could take a look at that. We have a wonderful police department in Corcoran and I would say that we could just continue to make that a little bit more robust and continue to move forward. And at some point, we're going to have to also look at determining what kind of size building we'll need as well.
Thank you. And candidate Woody.
Yeah, I think first and foremost, fire services and protection is probably crucial and key. Do I think we need it now? No, but definitely in the very near future, I would say we'd need it now. What constitutes that? Is it, is it population? Is it how many fires happen or per year, or how many surrounding fire departments need help or if we help them? But we'll definitely need it within probably the next 10 years. I think a good plan would be to communicate with surrounding fire departments, whether it's Loretto, Hanover, Rogers, and see how we can come to a common census where maybe we don't quite need a full time fire department at this point. Maybe we, they can guide us in how to do a part time fire department and still work with their services to protect the citizens and then gradually create a plan to have a full time fire department for the future needs of the city.
Next, candidate Wickram.
So with the police and fire, we, we won't need the full time fire department right away. It doesn't, the city doesn't have enough need for the full time department. The call line within Corcoran doesn't call for it. What the city does call for though, is a station within the Corcoran proper. Regardless of who buys the building, you need to have a centrally located fire station that can be serviced through other members of Corcoran, Roger, or Loretto, Hamel, Rogers, Hanover, those members to come in that live in Corcoran now to be able to use that station to respond out of and cover Corcoran.
And candidate Vernkamp.
Thank you. As far as our police department, I think we've got that shored up pretty good. If they need things, we, I balk very seldom at giving them what they need. I want them arriving or leaving safer than what they arrived at to protect us and such. As far as fire, we have some great responders. Rogers West Metro, which is Hamel Medina, so to speak, and Loretto, and we have Hanover. Great group of folks in all three of them. We are already talking with them, paying them appropriately for their services. A, a central station is one of the things I've imagined and thought and had conversation with Chief Luron. It would be nice if we could get some more volunteers to do these kinds of things too. Not only fire, but everything that goes on in our city. So fire is a focus and I'd like it sooner than later, but there is, is an extreme cost. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Espoolian.
So this one, I'll freely admit, this one's a little bit beyond me right now. But what I see is that we have so many surrounding fire departments in towns that are smaller than ours, that I'd have to see a cost benefit analysis of when we're ready for a fire department. We should do that sooner rather than later so we can put a stake in the ground and say, build towards this. From a police perspective, I agree with, with Councilman Vernkamp is that we have a great police department. Do I think they have all the really cool stuff that's available? I absolutely do. My biggest fear is how do we pay to replace that? Because the cost of a modern police force is astronomical when it comes to replacing vehicles, replacing computers, replacing technology, and then advances in technology. So public safety is a huge thing that we need. It's just a question of when do we need what? And I don't have a good answer for that until I see the numbers.
Great. And just so you know, the timekeeper signaled that 30 minutes has elapsed, ending the time for new questions from the audience. Let's proceed with the next question. The order will be Craig Espoolian, then Tony Wickram, Jason Woody, Dean Vernkamp, and Michelle Friedrich. The question is, if you are elected, how would you manage your availability to your constituents and keep your constituents informed? And go ahead.
Okay. So I believe that staying in touch with all the people in town is important. That's why I mentioned the listening sessions. I would hold those on a fairly regular basis, not just for a specific project like city center, but ongoing. My wife and I attended the country days and I really had a good time. She sold gnomes, if anybody likes that kind of stuff. And there are a lot of people that did, but there were a lot of crafters there. So I am inching towards retirement. I am extremely interested in what's going on in Corcoran. I work for myself and the only thing I can tell you is my boss is a slave driver. But I will have time to go over all this stuff because I'll make sure he gives me time off to deal with all this city stuff. Thank you.
And candidate Wickram.
With being on the fire department, my full time job, my family, I do have various hours. I work a rotating shift, so I have taken phone calls from people at midnight, 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM, all through the day. I am an open book. If you get to know me, you can call me anytime. I will answer my phone. Even if I'm at work, I will answer. I might not answer right away, but I'll get away and be able to return your phone call. And like I said, I am very open. You're always free to call me. You're free to stop and talk to me. I'm always around the community. Even when I, if you find me on an accident scene or you call 911, you have a question, ask me then too.
Great. Thank you. Candidate Woody.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a self-employed contractor and I don't really have a set nine to five. And it is, I do have a busy schedule like everybody else does, but it's pretty easy or a lot, lot easier for me to be flexible or much like Tony said, you know, I answer phone calls at 10:00 at night and, you know, 12:00 at night, 6:00 in the morning, emails, phone calls, text messages. I'm available pretty much, you know, 6:00 in the morning until midnight. My email is out there, my phone number is out there, my address is there. I'm around town a lot. I'm not very hard to find. I definitely believe it's crucial to have boots on the ground and address issues face to face. Dean has been very good at doing that and it seems to have a positive reflection of city council on the public and I wouldn't mind continuing in that footprint.
And candidate Vernkamp.
Thank you. Probably the most important thing to me is talking to everybody in town. I am there. If you call me, I will show up. I'd rather talk in person than on the phone than email. If you call me, please leave a message. I will call you back. My days off are Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and every other Wednesday. If anybody wants to know those schedules, I can give you my phone number now if you'd like, but it is public. It is my personal number. My wife very graciously gives up time with me for everything I do. I listen. I do everything I can to explain the situation and such. Many folks have changed my mind on, on the way I've felt things should happen and such. But I don't think you can find somebody as a council member more accessible than myself. And I don't beat my chest very often. Thank you.
And candidate Friedrich.
So I think feedback from the community is one of the most important things you can receive as a council member. And I know when I wasn't running for council, whenever I had a question for our current council, they were great at always calling me back and I always appreciated that. So I would reciprocate that back and always be available by phone call or email. And then I would say you can always also attend the, the open forums at council meetings, Parks and Trails Commission meetings, or Planning Commission meetings. Thank you.
For the next round, the order will be Michelle Friedrich, Dean Vernkamp, Craig Espoolian, Jason Woody, and Tony Wickram. The question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge to starting and/or growing a business in Corcoran? What, if anything, should the role of the city government be in supporting businesses and any labor resources? Go ahead, candidate Friedrich.
Thank you. I touched on this a little earlier when I mentioned the business that wasn't actually able to come into Corcoran. And I think that our, our planning department does an awesome job of managing all the things that you have to manage to make sure that all the, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed when a new business comes in to make sure they're being successful. And they expedite the process as quickly as they can too. I would say that I would try to incorporate continuing on with trying to make that a little bit better system. I would also say one of the biggest challenges is probably a financial challenge. And it, it might be wonderful at some point if the city could invest some money into small bus, like a small business fund to help maybe small businesses that need to access city sewer water to get a little bit of a start in our community. Thank you.
And candidate Vernkamp.
Greatest challenges for businesses right now is everything they have to do. Not just city related, but watershed district, the county, the state, everything they need to do for what needs to happen for that business. I think presently and in the future, I think our council has matured to the point where we truly do listen and do everything we can to help them with our current ordinances, by granting variances for all of the things we can do to help them come. There is a tremendous financial burden on a lot of these folks and if they don't have the money backing them, it is extremely difficult to come into our city. Us as a city, we do not have a lot of spare money, a lot of options to help anybody. So I'll apologize, but I'll do everything I can to help understand what's needed for new businesses to come to our city. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Espoolian.
So the businesses that I've spoken to inside of Corcoran, I've got three words that keep coming up. Simplify, simplify, simplify. Our process to get started is extremely convoluted to the businesses that come in. And most people get discouraged, not because of the long process, but by people that are also in the development business, say, develop anywhere but Corcoran. So we have to make it simpler. Number two, we have to define what we want and where we want it. That'll make it a lot easier to get started. Third, we have to define what is needed. What do we need inside of our city to solve the problems or to increase the experience for the people inside the city? And finally, resources. And I've spoken to the folks in Bellwether and we've got about 350 homes that are mainly retired business people that are chomping at the bit to act as a great set of minds to help small businesses grow. Thank you.
And candidate Woody.
Yeah, some more involvement with, with the city and state and county trying to jump on board, trying to get all on the same, the same page. There is a lot of red tape. There is a lot of hoops to jump through and it, it, like Epstein said, it is convoluted and there's a bunch of, just let's simplify it. Let's, let's set a plan to, to decide where we want this, where we want the commercial industrial projects to be and buildings to be and how we access and create infrastructure for people to access those. And there is a huge financial burden. And the greatest challenge would be to try to alleviate some of that or as much as we can to not discourage and push away new business opportunities, new people to, you know, diversify this, you know, population that we have. I think just creating the infrastructure and trying to like was touched on earlier, simplify the basics, simplify it to get someone in here and make it more affordable.
Thank you. And candidate Wickram.
Again, we all hit on the, the hoops that everybody has to jump through. Clearing those up, making it a clear, concise vision of the community of where we want businesses, where we want them to go. Create the infrastructure, getting it out there. As soon as the water sewer starts coming in, it'll be a lot easier for businesses to come in. They won't have to worry about septic and sewer. The other part of it is making sure that the infrastructure of the road is done. A lot of times the county will require them to put in stop signs, roundabouts, or some kind of traffic control change and that's their cost, their burden that they have to put in. Other things that we can do for them is to utilize some of the tax forgiveness rules that are out there in the state, allowing them to not pay taxes for a couple of years and then helping them financially build their company to better suit them inside the community.
Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Tony Wickram, then Jason Woody, Michelle Friedrich, Craig Espoolian, and Dean Vernkamp. What are the city's transportation needs and how should they be addressed? And go ahead, candidate Wickram.
Transportation needs within Corcoran is simply our roadway system. The number of accidents we have at some of these roadways are getting very high. The injury rate is down still, which is very good. However, corners like 30 and 19 need to be addressed. The more and more semi-traffic that has been pushed through the area due to construction is also an issue. The semi-traffic is taking a beating on our roads, wearing them out a lot faster than normal because of the massive amount of it. Construction through the areas and traffic backups is also pushing a lot of the traffic other, to other roads in the community which are wearing them out that aren't meant for abundance of traffic flow. County 50, for instance, is a heavily trafficked road now that needs to be addressed and taken care of because people live on it and need to take care of them.
Thank you. And candidate Woody.
Yeah, we have a lot of considerably large amounts of Yeah, we have a lot of considerably large amounts of drive-through traffic, people just passing through, coming from working in the cities and then they live out farther west, you know, whether it's Buffalo, Hanover, Montrose, or Deep Haven. We do have some, and with that being said, we do have some increased accidents and intersections that are becoming more and more of a problem with public safety. And it's not just people not paying attention or in a hurry, it's just what happens when you have so much extra traffic. And subsequently, the need for different types of traffic control devices, whether they're roundabouts or stoplights, will probably have to be implemented as a matter of public safety. And with more and more traffic, they're going to find more side roads, dirt roads, and those roads will see considerable amounts of more traffic and degrade exponentially faster, causing us more cost to maintain them.
Thank you. Candidate Friedrich.
I would agree with the pass-through traffic becoming a bigger issue as our city continues to grow and the surrounding cities around us continue to grow. Another item I think we'd need to review is all of the dirt roads in Corcoran. Dirt roads can be pretty expensive to maintain and I think it would be great to look at different options to find out maybe a plan for going forward and slowly trying to pave dirt roads. The last thing I would say too is just the maintenance of the new city roads that are being built should be something that we're watching as well.
Great. Thank you. And candidate Vern Camp. Or actually candidate Spoolian. My apologies.
Jay Tobin, I see out there. Thirty-four miles of unpaved roads in Corcoran. Jay gave me that number. I thought it was 36. So just something to keep in the back of your mind, 34 miles. Safety and traffic control are the things that we need mainly on the western side. For me, 101 and 30 is our number one priority. Our number two priority is 19 at the northwest corner of Corcoran. Number two is 30 and 116, I'm sorry, number three is 30 and 116, number four, 116 and 10/50, and finally, 30 and 19. That's the order I'd tackle, the safety aspects of our various controlled intersections. We have to remember though, that most of these roads are county-controlled. That means we have to work harder with the county to solve the problem.
And candidate Vern Camp.
The last three years I have spent, I don't mix words, beating on our county commissioner related to our county roads. There is very little we can do as a city. The comments up here, build it and then the county will respond. They need to respond now. All of these roads and everything that goes on them, yes, are public roads and such, but the county owns them. We've got to get more money coming out here to the suburbs and prepare us for these things. It's not our money. As far as going towards these roads, it might be in our property taxes, the Hennepin County, but it'd be nice if they spent more money here in town than they do in the inner city. Already made conversation about 19 and 30, 19 and 117. I've had solutions. Last one I'll leave you with, at 117 and 19, just put in the fourth stop sign. And thank you.
Okay. For the next round of questions, the order will be Jason Woody, Michelle Friedrich, Tony Wickram, Dean Vern Camp, and Craig Spoolian. How would you handle any potential or perceived conflicts of interest between your business or extracurricular activities with Corcoran needs? And go ahead, candidate Woody.
That's an interesting question. Well, it's, I can't think this one person has that, holds that power. I think it comes to having the whole city government get on board and define and kind of determine what constitutes conflict of interest. If, you know, somebody owns 80 acres of land versus 400 acres of land, is that 80-acre landowner, is that still a conflict of interest for certain things that may come up down the road? It's more of a delicate balance, I think. And I think we just have to sit down and get a comprehensive plan with, you know, the council, the city, landowners, citizens, and try to devise a plan that best suits our needs.
And candidate Friedrich.
Can you repeat that question again?
Yes. How would you handle any potential or perceived conflicts of interest between your business or extracurricular activities with Corcoran's needs?
Let's see. So this sounds like more of a personal question, personal conflict of interest. I don't have a business in Corcoran currently. And the extracurricular activities would be probably Parks and Trails Commission. So if I were elected council, I would have to resign from Parks and Trails Commission. Potential conflict of interest, I guess I would talk with the perceived possible people that were involved to see if there actually was a conflict of interest and move forward from there.
And candidate Wickram.
The conflict of interest I see would be my fire department stand, being on the fire department. And where I would stand on that is I would give my input to the city, the rest of the council, give my input to the community, and then when it come time to vote on that topic, I would abstain from that vote. Therefore, put me off the side and let the rest of the council vote on that subject, not putting me at advantage.
And candidate Vern Camp.
Yeah, Anthony answered that very well. I would have no conflict of interest as far as business and such. When I was in Maple Grove, even on the planning commission, when any development got within my rule was a half mile of my property, even though I owned five acres, I stepped down and became part of the audience and not part of the decision-making. And that's the way I would handle that going forward. Doing it here also. I don't see any other thing that I would have a conflict in, other than my personal opinion about everything that goes on in town. So I could sit in the audience a lot, but I am influenced by people that talk and give great ideas and great opinions. Appreciate the opportunity, the three years I've had, and then look forward to four more if I get there. Thanks.
And candidate Spoolian.
So from a business perspective, I consult with mainly startups. So there's no conflict there. I don't have any clients in Corcoran, although I do have a client, The Good Acre, located in St. Paul. They work with 150 independent farmers around the metro area. So potentially, there's some good stuff that could come to Corcoran with some of the farmland that potentially could be put to use with some of these farmers. I think that as a member of the Bellwether community, I know there's some things there that I would probably not abstain from in the beginning unless it was a huge conflict and that I would do as Councilor Vern Camp and some of the other folks on the table had indicated. But if it's good for the city, if it's good for the residents, and has a positive impact on our financial position, I think I'd probably stay involved.
Great. And for the next round of questions, the order will be Dean Vern Camp, Craig Spoolian, Tony Wickram, Michelle Friedrich, and Jason Woody. Under current law, cannabis production facilities and dispensaries are legal in Minnesota. What city regulations do you support related to potential cannabis businesses? And go ahead, candidate Vern Camp.
I need you to repeat that one more time.
Okay. Under current law, cannabis production facilities and dispensaries are legal in Minnesota. What city regulations do you support related to a potential cannabis business? Or potential cannabis businesses?
We spent time talking about this on the council. We do have an ordinance. Not all of us supported it because cannabis and marijuana and such is still a federal crime, which is a conflict. The state pushed it on to the municipalities that do ordinances and such. So it's extremely confusing right now, but we do have ordinances in place currently. We need clarity from not just the state of Minnesota, but the conflicts between the state and the federal side of things needs to be straightened out. A lot of more involvement related to the public side and thoughts and stuff, but there's been very little interest in our city for opening a business like that. So, thank you.
And Craig Spoolian.
Well, as Dean said, the rules are a little bit vague right now. I believe that the state required every municipality identify three areas where they could be. And I believe from my attendance at council meetings, that the ordinance says we can limit it to two, which we have done. Until those things get cleared up, I think I'd go to a friend of mine named Jeff O'Brien, who started his law career focusing on a variety of things, but then began to specialize in brew pubs, distilleries, and now cannabis. He'd probably been my go-to resource to get some guidance on what can be done, given what the state's doing. Thank you.
And candidate Wickram.
I'd like to follow the ordinance of limiting the use of cannabis dispensaries and the manufacturing of it, keeping it out of the community. It's not needed. It does bring in money, but is it the money that we want for our community? Is it the image we want for our community? And keeping it just out of our city.
And candidate Friedrich.
I think it's wonderful that our city has an ordinance in place regarding cannabis. I think that it might be wise to just take a backseat and see what happens with the process. I think it's still pretty early to determine what might be best. Other states have actually shown that it's pretty profitable, but I think time will tell. And once the state figures some of the things out that they need to get in place, I think then we could make a better determination of what that might look like for our city.
And candidate Woody.
Kind of like what the other candidates touched base on. There's a lot of things up in the air. There's a lot of red tape. There's a lot of unknowns right now. And especially, council member Dean touched base on, it's still illegal on a federal level. So therein lies kind of a little conflict there. It's legal on the state level, but illegal on a federal level. And let's say we do get a dispensary and then people go there and they show their ID. Well, no, you're in a national database and it is illegal to use marijuana and own guns. So they could technically take away your guns and arrest you. So that's another example of some of the complications with it. It's nice that we have a few areas set aside, but I think we should probably pump the brakes on it, kind of let it play out and see how surrounding communities go about their plan and maybe construct a plan later on in the future.
Thank you. For the next round of questions, the order will be Michelle Friedrich, Craig Spoolian, Dean Vern Camp, Tony Wickram, and Jason Woody. Please give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions. And go ahead, candidate Friedrich.
Let's see. So I think this would be one that I could reference, and it was actually one that happened to me. The current substation in Corcoran was supposed to be placed right behind my garage in the field next to where I live. And I worked with, I actually did door knocking, came across some people that actually were supportive of it, came across majority that were not. We kind of came together, accepted the responses that didn't agree with us, but moved forward to try to explain to council why we didn't think that the location was a proper location for the substation. And ultimately, the substation was moved to where it currently is and now, right off of County Road 16 and Larkin. But we had to work with both sides of the, thank you, both sides of the parties to make sure that we had addressed everyone's comments.
Thank you. And candidate Spoolian.
So I think listening is the number one skill that most of us don't practice as much as we should. So my goal is always to listen, to understand where the other people are coming from. I recently had a back-and-forth with a business in Corcoran as I was canvassing. And this individual and I did not see eye to eye until I walked through all the positions I held for Corcoran. And I was able to at least earn his willingness to say, yes, I will consider voting. I think it really is trying to find a compromise in middle ground because most of us want similar outcomes. We're going to disagree and how do we get there? So it's find out what those outcomes are, find out what the things that are needed are, and build a pathway from both of our beliefs to a common outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Vern Camp.
This is a great question. I spend a tremendous amount of time with everyone that calls and talks to me or speak face-to-face with him. There are many hours I will never get back because individuals don't see it both ways and such. I do get frustrated sometimes and I will speak my mind very clearly when that happens. It's a two-way street and there's some folks in our town that aren't going to listen to it and I'm not going to force them. But I am passionate when I talk to folks and I want good things happening in our city. And well-thought-out, well-educated. Folks do have to do a little bit of their own research and stuff to get there. So again, I'm transparent and what you see is what you get. I don't usually wear a suit, but tonight I do. So, thank you.
And candidate Wickram.
Making sure that people that don't follow the same belief, that don't follow your view, making sure you point out the finer points of it, give them the reasons to and for not to, making sure you play both sides. I am one to not give you, I'll give you the straight-up answer that you were going to want to hear, but I also will double back and make sure that you understand the other side of it, that you'll hear both sides. Things in our community are never cut and dry. We live in a farming community with a lot of people coming out from the inner city and we need to make sure that everybody understands where we come from and where we have to meet in the middle.
And candidate Woody.
I think the best way to go about it is like somebody else touched base on is find the common ground. You're never going to suffice everybody, never going to make everybody happy. There's no perfect solution for everything. I mean, there's six different ways to skin a cat. And if someone that's disagreeing with you in conversation, try to pinpoint the other. Don't go to specifics, but just give some broad bullet points as to the benefits of this, the benefits of that, and how it hopefully will maybe persuade them to have a more of an open mind. There's two sides to every story, but just more community involvement and letting level heads prevail, not letting emotions or personal beliefs or disagreements get in the way of finding some common ground to better everything and have a better situation and a better outcome.
And we are almost done. This will be our final question. The order will be Dean Vern Camp, then Michelle Friedrich, then Craig Spoolian, Jason Woody, and then Tony Wickram. Question is, is there an issue that wasn't discussed in this forum that you wish to address? And go ahead, candidate Vern Camp.
Yeah, thank you. I hear a lot tonight about there's no plan in Corcoran and such. That's frustrating. We have a comp plan that is nearly 40 years old. Involvement from the public and such, I expect a lot of involvement for the next phase of that comp plan for 2050. Coming up here in the next couple of years, there's three years at least spent on comp plans and such. We have a plan. We know where the residence areas are, the industrial, the commercial, everything is planned. And we've been there pretty solid for the last 40 years. It hasn't changed much. So that's probably the biggest issue that's coming out of this conversation. There's a plan, folks. We've been doing it for a long time. The people that have been on previous councils and our mayors have done a good job sticking to that plan. I think we should continue. Thanks.
Candidate Friedrich.
Let's see. I would like to add on to candidate. I would like to add on to candidate Vern Camp's response, in that I agree, as a previous staff person, we do have a comp plan that's been in place for at least 40 years, and it's a good comp plan, and we follow it. We do, we refer back to it many, many times. I guess I would add that even the best-laid plans sometimes need to have a look and have a readjustment, and that if it doesn't make sense for an industrial-zoned area to stay industrial, especially with all the development that we have with roads and main highways coming through and near our city, that I think we need to have a review of that more than every 10 years, and we need to do what makes the most sense for our community. Thank you.
And candidate Spillian.
So, yes, there's a comp plan, but I can tell you that what got us here can't get us there. So, 10 to 20 years in the future, using what we've done is not sufficient to get us where we want to go. And I can tell you from a detailed perspective, because I've filed multiple Freedom of Information requests, getting detail on what the plan is, pretty skinny. And that's not necessarily bad, it just means we can do better. We have to do better. We've got so many more people in Corcoran than when the comp plan was first worked on. We've had so many more people in the last 10 years. So, we've got to have a more detailed plan that goes beyond what the Musa says. We've got to put our vision into it of where we want the Musa to go, so that the Met Council sees that we know we need something different than what they're trying to give us. Thank you.
And candidate Woody.
Yeah, I think the city's done a pretty good job with their comp plans, and I think over the last six, eight years, maybe even 10, they've gotten a lot more organized and more logical in where they're sticking stuff. They're keeping like businesses and like properties and zone the same way in areas where they're grouped up together. You know, and that's good, because it keeps, you know, that type of business out of downtown, out of the residential areas, and it creates more safety. I don't think any comp plan is necessarily etched in stone, but they're definitely kind of hard to change completely once enacted, but like Michelle stated, you know, doesn't mean they can't be tweaked a little bit to address current needs with traffic, population increases, and utilities and things alike.
And candidate Wickram.
So, an item that I'd like to bring up is the solar panel use within the Corcoran area. Everybody seems to be going to solar, solar panels are great, they have their use. However, the aftermath of a solar panel farm, the repercussions, the heavy metals, the hazardous material that you have to pick up after that solar field is done and used up, is something that the Corcoran residents, I don't think, understand. The businesses that put it in or ask you to put it in don't give you the full example of what's to come after their 20 years, after they paid you. Better way around that, though, is to utilize rooftops. Businesses that come into Corcoran, newer restaurants, everything, utilize the rooftop to put those solar panels on to help mitigate the problem of the eyesore within the Corcoran fields and green space.
Thank you. And now I will call on you for your two-minute closing statement. The order will be Jason Woody, Michelle Friedrich, Craig Spillian, Tony Wickram, and Dean Vern Camp. Why, go ahead, candidate Woody.
Well, again, I just want to thank everybody for being here and all the candidates. It's been a good conversation. It's a lot of the same bullet points and a lot of the same ideas seem to be resonating with all the candidates, and which is crucial, and it's a great part to achieve where we want to go, and everybody gets on the same page, and we're not catering to everybody's individual needs, we're catering to what the common group thinks we should do for the future, for this and for that. And that's, a lot of that tends to deal with listening to people, boots on the ground, being available, whether it's early in the morning or late at night. I'm kind of a what you see is what you get. I'm honest, and I got integrity. I'll run it with transparency. I'll just tell it to you straight, and I'm someone that'll try my best, and I own my own mistakes, and I'm down to learn. I'm still a bit young, but I'm more of a blank canvas that can offer a fresh perspective and hopefully possibly get elected, and then hopefully shape Corcoran into a future city that has a delicate balance and a good balance between rural and commercial and industrial and not losing our civility or peace of mind and our safety. Once again, I want to thank everybody.
Candidate Friedrich.
Thank you. Thanks again to the League of Minnesota Women Voters and for hosting this tonight. I guess I would start by saying I believe in transparency, balance within our unique community, and continued fiscal responsibility for our community, too. A past council member said it really wonderfully. He said, "Being on the council is a wonderful way to provide to your community a voice, to the community and to the residents, who don't necessarily always get to have a voice heard. You're their voice." I have about 20 years of experience in the public sector, public service sector, between working at this local school and then also working at the city of Corcoran, and I really hope that you'll consider voting me for one of your next council members. Thank you.
And candidate Spillian.
First of all, thank you, the League of Women Voters. Thank you to Hope Community Church. Thank you to the candidates. I want to leave you with some words and phrases to ponder at the end of the day. Number one is commitment. I am a regular attendee of city council meetings as I try and learn this new piece of our world. Balance, residential, retail, entertainment, commercial, industrial, all are needed. Harmony between our past, our present, and our future. City center, in my mind, that conjures up Stillwater, Edina. That's what I want our city center to remind people of. The Highway 30 corridor, the possibility exists here for a truly mixed-use road, all the way out to our western edge. Industrial Commercial Park, where funding can come from to create the quality of life our residents and our businesses want. Infrastructure, we already mentioned the 34 miles of unpaved road. What's our plan for looking at the cost-benefit analysis and when we pave those? Smart, measured growth, what we want, where we want it, when we want it, and why we want it. City experience, residents, guests, city as a whole, and our overall tax position. Government money, I alluded to this before, that this is an illusion. No government has their own. It all comes from the residents, city, county, state, federal. Ag tech and ag business, somewhat unique way to look towards our past and build our future. Destinations, creating places and experiences where both residents and guests desire to go. Think of bringing the Minneapolis food scene to Corcoran. Customer experience, we want that recurring piece. And finally, leverage, we have plenty of assets, we need to leverage them better. There's cards out in the hallway, they have my phone number and email. I'd encourage you to pick one up. It's got my positions on it. Feel free to contact me with other questions. Thank you.
And candidate Wickram.
I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your night, like all of us that did, to come out here and support us, hear our views, hear our points. Again, I like to keep the community rural, not fully rural, but a quaint little country town. Not bring in all the industrial, not bring in all this big business, so we lose our feel of Corcoran. We don't need to be Edina, we don't need to be big metro area. We are a down-home, country city. Thank you.
And candidate Vern Camp.
Thank you. I'm going to do it in a different order. Hope Church, huge community member in our city. Thank you, Legal Women Voters, for doing 100, and if I remember right, I didn't write it down, four years of doing this. About as big a headache as being on the council sometimes. So, I am transparent. I'm clear on my thoughts and ideas, but willing to listen, also have to be listened to. I'm going to do a public service announcement. We need volunteers in our city. Our J.C.s need help. Our Lions, Corcoran Lions, needs help. They put on a pretty good deal down at Lions Park, nine, 10, 11 nights out of the year, and I hope you all get a chance to go down there and participate in those kind of things. But we need involvement. We need volunteers from all sides. There's a lot of people that are doing it right now that are long-term residents and such. We've got a whole bunch of new residences. To sit back and take shots on us doing things wrong and stuff, I don't mind that, but please come with solutions. I ask my kids that all the time. What's your ideas? What's your thoughts? Stop complaining, and what are your solutions to problems? We need that involvement. I want to thank everybody that's up here also, especially Anthony, being a firefighter for Hanover and responding to the area that he responds to. I want to thank all of our police, all of our firefighters from all of the supporting towns and such for what they do. And I want to thank all of you out here spending an hour of your time listening to us talk. Appreciate you all. Thanks.
Thank you. This concludes the Corcoran City Council Candidate Forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve our community. Audience, please join me in thanking the candidates with our applause. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you for the Corcoran city staff and to the Hope Community Church for supporting this event, including live streaming and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at l w v w p a dot org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on issues. Sorry. Please remember to vote in the November 5th election by absentee ballot or in-person. On the November ballot, Minnesota voters will be asked to reauthorize or end a constitutional amendment allocating 40% of the state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Over 50% of the voters must vote yes to approve the constitutional protection of the system. Leaving the question blank counts as a no vote. Please be sure to look for the amendment and vote. Early voting is already underway. Your vote is your voice. L W V welcomes new members, both women and men, at l w v w p a dot org. Thank you and good night.